You are live.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, May 11th, Special Virtual Meeting of City Council. We now call the meeting to order. Ann, would you please call roll?
Yes, Ms. Aludo.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Here.
Mr. Keeler.
Here.
Mayor Amoros Grooms.
Here, thank you. I make the motion we adjourn to executive session for the following purposes: For conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject to pending or imminent court action; To consider the purchase of property for public purpose; And to consider the appointment of a public employee. May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Aludo, Ann, please call roll.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Amoros Grooms.
Yes.
And Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Very good. We will meet in the executive session meeting.
Thank you.
I guess we're back. Hey Matt.
Hello.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Guess I should ask the same question. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, good.
We are live streaming.
You know, at least for me, Zoom works a lot better than the WebEx. Pictures are a lot clearer. I can hear everybody more clearly.
I agree with you Greg.
Yeah.
It does work better.
Hello gang, we are waiting on two more please. Okay, one more.
Okay, it is seven o'clock. We will resume our city council meeting and all the meetings back to order. Good evening and welcome to the May 11th virtual meeting of Dublin City Council. These times are certainly extraordinary. We are appreciative of the state of Ohio in their declaration of emergency and the legislature passing laws that improve and address the pandemic and give us the ability to hold these meetings virtually. For the duration of the stay at home order, we will be holding council meetings online and live streaming those meetings on YouTube. You can access the live stream on the city's website. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under streaming video on the city's website. Patient as far as it is possible, so we encourage you to use those formats to make your comments. This is public business and we certainly welcome the participation of all residents. The system is far from perfect and we are doing the best we can given these new resources. With that, I would like ask a clerk to call the roll please.
Ms. Aludo.
Here.
Mayor Amaro Scrums.
Here.
Mr. Keeler.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Yeah.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
And Mr. Reiner.
Does anyone heard John? Ryan or Maria Cindy, have we heard from John?
We have not heard from John. I have Ryan calling him right now.
Very good. We will just have him join us.
Wait, he just popped in. He'll be there and give him about five seconds please. Well, maybe a little bit longer.
And Mr. Reiner. Roll call. Thanks.
Okay, Homer, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Homer.
You're very welcome.
Great, well, it is Public Works Week and we are very excited to announce our APWA reaccreditation. We have our own Megan O'Callahan with us here this evening. Megan wanted to invite you to make some comments if you would so choose.
Sure. Good evening, members of council. Thank you for taking the time to recognize the entire Public Works team. The team works very hard each and every day with a goal of providing a high quality of life for our residents. The past couple of months, the team's works take work has taken on a new meaning as we worked quickly to adjust to the emergency circumstances. So we could continue to carry out all of the essential services without disruption and the team has proven their dedication to service and resilience during this challenging time. And I'm very proud of all of their efforts. Unfortunately, we weren't able to invite the community to the service center this year to help us celebrate Experience Public Works Day in the past, but we are finding ways to engage the public. There'll be different ways. But we are finding ways to engage the public next week and highlight the team's efforts through the week. I'm also pleased to share, as you mentioned, that APWA Accreditation Council has awarded us full reaccreditation status and that'll be for the next four years. That process for accreditation, it's extensive and requires ongoing efforts of the entire team. We perform an in-depth review of all of our policies and procedures and then we compare those against best practices that have been established nationwide by APWA. We then host a site review with some of our peers from around the country. And finally, then there's a vote by the National APWA Accreditation Council. So the process has us evaluating all of our policies and procedures and looking for opportunities for process improvements and it's an ongoing process. The team did very well throughout the entire process and the APWA representatives that conducted the site visit in Dublin, they were very impressed with our organization as well as the city as a whole, so we couldn't be prouder of that. And then lastly, I'd just like to thank city council for providing all the necessary resources for us to do our jobs and all of your support in general. So thank you.
Great Megan, we have a proclamation for you, but they certainly lose something in translation when I we don't have something to deliver. So we will hold on to that until we are together and it will be all the more sweeter at that time. But thank you to you and your team and all of our staff who you know, day in and day out, work extremely hard to make all of Dublin fantastic. So please continue to pass along our appreciation to all of them and thanks for what you do.
I will be sure to do so. Thank you.
Good. And do we have any public comments for our citizen comments, items not on the agenda this evening?
We have not received any comments from the public.
Very good Sue, have we received any digitally on the web?
No, we have not.
Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the April 27 meeting minutes on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to remove those from the consent agenda? During none. And would you please color roll?
Yes, Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner. Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Amaro Scrums.
Yes.
Okay, we have first reading public hearing ordinances, ordinance 13-20.
This is authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to accept a 0.068 acre more or less sanitary sewer easement from Darshan Shaw for property located and owned at 8700 Highland Crowe Road, Union County Parcel Number 1700240390000.
Very good, thank you. Is there an introduction?
I'll introduce it.
Ms. Aludo. We have Paul Hammersmith here with us this evening due to staff report presentation. So please Paul, take it away.
Yes, good evening, members of council. Mr. Darshan Shaw owns a 1.29 acre parcel located at 8700 Highland Crowe Road, which was annexed to Dublin in September of last year. It's actually shown on your exhibit and actually has a yellow star on it on the exhibit. Mr. Shaw has been constructing a single-family house for his private residential use on the parcel. The house will be served by Dublin Sanitary Sewer System located to the north of the Shaw parcel. In order to provide for a future public sanitary sewer extension to the existing parcel located at 8698 Highland Crowe Road immediately south of the Shaw parcel. And it's shown as the Minyard Parcel on the exhibit. A 25-foot easement is necessary along the eastern portion of the Shaw parcel, basically along the entire eastern portion, which amounts to the .068 acre easement. Mr. Shaw is conveying the easement to the city at no cost. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance at the second reading public hearing on May 26th. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks Paul, appreciate that. And do we have any comments that were submitted prior to this evening's meeting?
We have not received any comments.
And Sue, are there any coming in through live stream?
No comments or questions.
Thank you. Comments, questions of council? None. We, let's see. There'll be a second reading of public hearing on this Tuesday, May 26th at our council meeting. Oh, I have one question. Provided that this sanitary sewer easement is granted, is there more where this line is intended to go or is this a completion of a sanitary sewer line?
This would be the completion of the sanitary sewer line, just serving the parcel to the south. That would be its terminus.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll hear that. We'll see you again on May the 26th for a second reading.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Introduction, public hearing resolution, resolution 25-20.
This is a resolution adopting the 2020-2021 city council goals.
And is there an introduction?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you Ms. Aludo. Okay, I think our Vice Mayor Kathy DeRosa will take it from here and she has several several items for us to ponder.
Great, thank you mayor and good evening. So what I bring forth tonight is the adoption of our 2020-2021 city council goals and these are of course are the outshoot of our strategic workshop and retreat that we had earlier this year. Now, it was interesting when, as is the case over the years, council sets forth multiple objectives, multiple goals. These are additive frankly to goals that have happened in prior years, many of which continue to support the work of council today. But it was interesting as we prepared to adopt these into the record this evening, that when we look at the goals, it in the times that we're living in, it is reaffirming what we as a council set forth for ourselves really for the next year. And I'll just take a moment to remind us of what those are. The first was to ensure fiscal strength and sustainability through adoption of our economic development strategy. And as we've heard from Matt. And as we've heard from Matt and from others, as we continue to work through these unprecedented times, having sustainability and having solid financials as we do in Dublin is so important. So again, we're going to reaffirm that and to work on our economic development. The second goal that we as a council agreed we wanted to put forth this year is also a continuation of a goal that was set in 2019. And that is to become the most connected community in the United States. We were talking about this again at our last meeting. Man, it would be very difficult to adventure education, to venture job, to venture social without connectivity. And yet we know for so many in our country, that is the case. And so having real emphasis on connectivity and making sure we have solid connectivity for all of our residents was a goal too and very, very timely. The third one, I guess we can't pass a day where we're not seeing more about the importance of data and big data in making decisions. And this was also reflected in our third strategic goal from our council, and that is to innovate and advance the services we provide to our community using data and big analytics. As you may recall, we put forth some work on this last year, put data infrastructure in place, staffing and resources to really help us. And again, as we think about what we're going to need for the future and that future tomorrow, that future 10 years from now, data is going to play an increasing role. So that is the third. We added a fourth goal this year, which was to be sure that while we're working on certainly the things of today, we continue to have a focus on tomorrow. So the fourth council goal is to put forth a Dublin 2035 framework. And that framework to really look at what is it that the community is going to need and what is it that the residents want when we think about our future? And we said there really were some overarching themes of infrastructure, land use, economics and quality of life. So we've begun to work on that fourth goal. So with that, unless one of my fellow council members wishes to make, does wish to make a comment, I would put that forward to a vote.
Very good. Thank you. It is funny, you know, we had our retreat goal that in February, March, I believe. And boy, has life changed since then. But our goals are certainly have become only more important at timeframe and quite pointed. So. And have we received any, we've received any comments via the web on this personized meeting?
We have not received any comments.
Thank you. And Sue, did we, have we received any livestream this evening?
No comments or questions.
Thank you. Council questions, comments, thoughts?
Only one, Chris. I just think that I think that this pandemic has just kind of crystallized a little bit about some of the discussions we had at the retreat. And I think it gives us a sense of importance on the directions that we're moving when it comes to the 2035 and the connectivity. So I feel good that we, that we feel like that we've had the ability to look forward and know that we have something that we can hang this, these goals on because I think it's really important. So.
Thank you. Okay, with that, Anne, would you please color roll?
Yes, Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner. Let's go to Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Amaro Scrooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner again.
Yes.
To me, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that will bring us to staff comments and I believe Dana is here and has a few thoughts for us.
Yeah, good evening, members of council. Thank you very much. I wanted to present to you the my findings relative to the Director of Finance position and ask for your support on my recommendation. I've conducted a recruitment process for the Director of Finance. The position was posted through the City of Dublin Job Board for applicant interest from February 11th through March 1st of 2020. It was advertised with the Association of Government Accountants, Ohio City County Management Association, the International City County Management Association, and the Government Finance Officers Association. Thirty-five candidates applied and were sourced for those that best fit the required and the desired qualifications for the director position. Of the 35 candidates that applied, we identified 10 for first round interviews whose education and experience best met the qualifications that we were seeking. After we concluded those first round interviews, we then conducted a panel interview of the top three candidates. And the panel consisted of Angel, myself, Angel Muma, the Chief Financial Officer with Cota, and Prior Director of Finance with the City of Dublin, Megan O'Callahan, Deputy City Manager, Chief Operating Officer, Homer Rogers, Assistant City Manager, Chief Strategy and Innovation Officer, Jennifer Miglietti, Director of Human Resources, and Kelly Rose, Human Resources Manager. Again, we interviewed the top three and based on their demonstrated accounting, financial management experience, considerable experience in the public sector and strong supervisor and leadership experience, we narrowed that down to a top candidate. I'm recommending Mr. Matt Stifler, who has served as our interim director for the past six-plus months in this role, to be appointed. Through this period, I think that Matt has not only demonstrated the educational and work experience necessary to assume this role, but he's also done a great job exceeding expectations in his role as the interim director over the last six months, as well as having to also act as deputy finance director as well. So he's done a great job handling, handling two positions really at the same time. As you know, he completed the five-year capital improvement program. He prepared the city's 2020 operating budget, performed a year-end closeout, assisted the state auditor in the auditing process, completed the city's CAF and PAF. We also, we had a very successful year with economic development, with retention expansion and attraction efforts this last year. And Matt was involved in almost all of those and getting those ready. And he's also did a great job taking us through the most recent bond rating process that we went through wherein we achieved AAA ratings by all three bonding agencies. And he successfully, so far anyway, has worked his way through a pandemic. I hope that doesn't appear on too many resumes, but he's done a great job in working through this emergency response that we're in. So he continues to impress. I hope you'll agree. He's got great analytical skills. He's a good strategic thinker, good policy development and presentation style. His ability to translate the technical knowledge of fund accounting, strategic budgeting, local government taxes, revenue sources, and complex economic development structures, and to understand the language for all of us is very helpful. And he does, does a great job with that. And he possesses just a good business acumen, which is great to work with when you're trying to run these day-to-day operations. So again, throughout the interview process, he really demonstrated extensive knowledge of governmental finance, including budgeting, investments, debt, payroll, and auditing standards, as well as public, public policy aspects of local government, municipal government structure and processes. With that, again, I recommend and with the concurrence of my fellow panel members who conducted the interview, we unanimously, unanimously agreed that Mr. Stifler best demonstrated the required and preferred qualifications for the Director of Finance position. And pursuant to Section 6.3, 6.03B of the Dublin Revised Charter, I'd hereby present Mr. Matt Stifler to council for appointment to the Director of Finance position with the City of Dublin. And I respectfully request council's consent and approval of Mr. Stifler's appointment to this position.
Well, thank you, Dana, for going through such a process to vet all of the 35 candidates that applied for that position. We sure do appreciate that. We had opportunity in our executive session this evening to vet Stifler as well. And I am very pleased to report that City Council does affirm your decision that. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the city manager's recommendation of Matthew Stifler as finance director. And is there a second?
Second.
Well, I had three of them. So that's good news for you, Matt. I had both, I had John, Jane and Christina. So hopefully that feels extra good. With that, Anne, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Amaro Scrooms.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Well, Matt, this is, these are really hard times because we would so like to be with you and congratulate you and be with you in person for really this fantastic moment, not just for you, but for us as a city as well. So warm congratulations to you and we are so thrilled to have you officially in the capacity that you have unofficially been serving in. So congratulations and thank you. We are looking forward to working with you for many years and it's a great thing coming out of our financial work. Okay, any other comments?
I have a few more comments I'd like to make. And again, I'd like to congratulate Matt as well and thank you, council, for your support. Very much appreciated. Just a few items. One is a follow-up to your last meeting where you had asked about restaurant expansion and DORA, which is the designated outdoor refreshment area and the like. I just wanted to assure council, we continue to work on that. I want to thank the staff team that's been working on this and communicating with restaurants. Special thanks to Scott Drain with Double Convention of Business Bureau, who's done a great job of getting out there and communicating with the restaurant hospitality industry. We're working on a few fronts, so just by way of update. So we are working with Scott and others. And I appreciate again Scott reaching out to a lot of restaurants in town to look into the potential expansion of dining areas associated with the restaurants. We've not had very many takers on that yet, although I understand a couple in Bridge Park are considering that. We're also looking at a downtown seating area in historic Dublin. We've got a little bit more to go through on the analysis of that and run that by Franklin County Public Health just as a sanity check. But we're working on that as well. We're not quite sure how liquor license may follow that outdoor seating, if it's expanded beyond the outdoor seating they already have. But we're going to continue to work on that. We also continue to work on the concept of the DORA and that may follow later. But nonetheless, I just want to do assure council that we are prepared administratively and under the emergency conditions to respond to and assist our restaurants. Because it's not just as easy as saying, yeah, go ahead and do that. You know, we need to include the fire marshal. We need to include building staff, zoning staff and the like. But we're, we're prepared to move very efficiently should they, should they have that need. Obviously, going on to another topic, it's very disappointing that we announced the cancellation of our July 4th events and fireworks on Friday. That decision kind of got out a little bit faster. I think we were really looking to maybe have that decision this week. But I, we reached out to the Central Ohio Mayor's Managers Association and worked with them, with other communities, as well as the Ohio Township Association and trying to make a determination on what would be in the best interest of several of the communities as a whole and work together with them. And I want to thank Middle Ohio Regional Planning Commission as well for helping to facilitate the dialogue. And at the end of the day, the two associations came together and said, at least most, most all of its members and said, look, it's probably best to postpone that given the information that we have in hand right now. So we regret that that's the case. But I just want to assure everyone that our staff is working very hard and diligently to be and are very innovative and creative to come up with new and different ways to celebrate our independence. We will not go without celebrating our independence. We will do that. Says a guy who's a son of the American Revolution. We're going to get out there and celebrate and I hope you all will do that as well. But a lot of good innovative ideas, if the public has those and would like to share those with us, we'll certainly work with the public to try to help in any way we can. We're very focused on reopening as the governor has announced the reopening that's kicking off yet tomorrow and going forward. We're very tuned in to what the governor is allowing and, and how this is going to unfold. The idea being we want to be there to be supportive of our business community and of course, to our residents in general as, as we start to open the state back up and be safe about it. So we are doing a lot ourselves that way and have been for a number of weeks now as a staff to operate safely and, and to be here for the residents and our services and to abide by all of those rules and regulations that have been put out. The next thing I want to, I actually want to lift up and thank the mayor for all of her effort relative to following the CARES Act at the, both the state and federal level. She won't tell you this, so I'm going to say it. She's worked extremely hard and put in a lot of time to work with our federal and our state delegations and others to try to really understand what this is, what's it about, and how it might benefit the City of Dublin. So we put some information out to you about that. And then the last item is just a summary of the committee meetings that occurred last week between Public Services Committee, Admin Committee, and the Finance Committees of Council. I want to thank the committee chairs for allowing me to just put that summary together. I let you all do the reporting out, but we wanted to get that turnaround quickly because we knew it would take a little bit longer to get minutes put together. But we wanted to try to get some, some guidance and direction on some of those items. So thanks to all of you participating in those committee meetings and for the direction and the help that you're bringing to council tonight. And with, other than any questions that you may have, that's all I have for the report. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Certainly, it is no easy chore to drive this city the way that, that you are doing in this time. So thank you. I can, I think I speak for all of council when we see our email inboxes fill up on a daily basis of comments about residents, which we love to hear. But the diversity of those comments can be very difficult to navigate. So thank you for doing what you're doing and certainly appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to council committee reports. First up, we'll have Jane with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'm just going to try when I give a couple of these reports for planning and zoning to just give you kind of a little overview of some of the important cases that we saw. Last week, we, we looked at the Dublin Gateway case that would 90 single-family homes on 45 acres, 150-unit assisted living facility at the corner of Highland, Croy and Post Road. The commission voted that not to be recommended to council. And I'm just going to give you a quick summary as to why that was. The criteria for a preliminary plat and a preliminary development plan on this particular partial being rezoned from rural residential district to a PUD. The commission did not feel that it met the development standards of the zoning code. They also felt that as to the community plan, because it was considered a more rural district, that many of the, that the density, the lot coverage went against what the community plan called for, as well as there were many questions about traffic. A lot of still unanswered questions about how we would, how that, how traffic would be managed, the roadway and the development in increasing traffic. So I wanted to let you know that that did not move forward. The OSU final development plan appeared before the Planning and Zoning Commission and it was unanimously approved. So those are the highlights of planning and zoning. Thank you.
Well, I'm sure we'll be hearing more about your first item and read through those meeting minutes, read through those carefully. Thank you.
Okay, next is the Admin Committee. Kathy.
Yes, thank you very much. I have a couple items to bring forward tonight. As you may have recalled at our last meeting, that the Admin Committee met on April 22nd and then we met again here on May 4th. And we reviewed the health benefits program of the city that was presented by staff. We looked at, in quite a bit of detail, at costs, at potential plans. And we spent a fair bit of time going over really the many steps that staff has worked to do cost mitigation and have done a terrific job really on an area that, as we all know, continues to see cost increases. And by the work of staff, as you recall from last time, we've estimated that the budget will actually be significantly lower than we thought it was going to be for FY 2020. But they aren't going to stop, staff is continuing to work, of course, on researching opportunities to work on some of the major things like stop-loss premiums, et cetera, so forth. And with the two meetings and the presentation, the committee members expressed confidence in the approach and the diligence. And at this time, the committee is not suggesting that staff continue to do work on this. And at this time, the committee is not suggesting that, um, staff continue to do work on this, but, um, our recommendation to Council is that we continue to, um, uh, support staff and their work to find cost mitigation, but that we put this aside as we work through really the whole cost of what it's going to take for the city from the pandemic, as we work through our 2021 budget and to bring it back at that time. So, I'm not sure we need to do any sort of a, uh, recommendation, but I will pause and see if the committee members want to add more to that. Or Council? Okay, so we will, uh, we will look for staff's recommendations as we begin work on that 2021 budget, which is, we know is happening pretty quick here. Um, the second item that came before the committee was the Administrative Committee reviewed the Human Resource Campaign, or the HRC's Assessment of Dublin's Ordinances Policies as they pertain to the LGBTQ discrimination. And as you may have recalled, the group does an assessment, and they use an assessment index quote tool called the Municipality Equality Index. And they do store scorecards for cities around the United States and several in the state of Ohio, including Dublin. And they've done this in prior years, and the next index is scheduled to be released later this summer in July. Um, the staff and the committee spent time looking through a series of recommendations. I would say from the lens of the scorecard, but not, not to just meet, um, a goals on a scorecard, but to really look at the subject at hand that this index looked at and ask, are there things that we could continue to be looking at or to implement? And as a result of that, staff and the committee recommended that there are several things that, yes, would increase, um, our scores in the index, but also increase our understanding and our involvement in the community. So, the, um, committee is bringing forward a recommendation that, um, staff, um, begin to immediately implement a couple things. And one of those is mandatory education on LB, LGBTQ issues, um, and to appoint a couple of liaisons, um, of our current staff members. Um, that would work with this, the LGBTQ liaison would work with the community and the City Manager's Office, and a similar liaison would be a representative within our Police Department. And these don't really require any action from Council, as staff will take those forward, but that was the recommendation of the committee. Then we, um, spent some time talking about both, um, uh, potential additional things that we could look at as a group. Um, the things that I have mentioned previously about education and liaisons are, are rather administrative in their regard, if you will. But there are also policy issues and those types of things that, um, could be looked at and could be considered. So, we spent some time in the commission talking about those. Um, and at this time, the recommendation for the, from the committee is that, from a policy perspective, that we put the liaisons, um, the staff put the liaisons in, um, in place, and that we work with those liaisons and to have some additional community, um, engagement and conversation about what are their perspectives and what are their needs. And at that time, um, that work would could come back to the Administrative Committee, and at that time, then that committee would make a recommendation. If there are potential things that we want from a policy perspective, that we could refer that to the Community Advisory Committee. We could set up some additional sessions, or we could leave it as the work of the Administrative Committee. So, um, as in summary, we'll take some steps to build some liaisons, to do some education, and continue our learning and perspective, and then bring that back to Council. That is my report. Do the committee members want to add to that? Thank you.
Well, Kathy, I certainly appreciate that. That's a difficult subject to undertake. Now, my, my hope would be that it would not be just LGBTQ specific, but it would, but that would be a component of it, and the larger component would be all, all minority groups.
Yeah, thank you, and that was a, the, yeah, the conversation to the committee as well, and that's why we think it's important to, to do the outreach and have the liaison and begin to have some, some conversations for, for scope as well as breadth. So, yes, thank you.
Uh, because we do get a lot of various requests about, uh, you know, on these subjects, and so I think it's important to include all of, all of them and have this be a component of the larger picture of, um, understanding the needs of the minority groups, um, in our community and that we interact with on a daily basis. Um, very good. Uh, do we have any public comment in from this on the, uh, submitted prior to this evening's meeting?
Uh, no, we did not have any public comment for this item.
And Sue, have we had any live stream?
No public comments or questions.
Great, thank you. Uh, then is there a motion regarding the committee recommendations? No moved. Thank you, Ms. Ludo, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Keeler. Uh, Anne, would you please call a roll?
Oh, yes. Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner. Um, Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor De Rosa.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, moving on to Community Development Committee. John? Perhaps we lost John. I'll, I'll circle back, uh, that, appropriate. Uh, Finance Committee, Christina.
Yes, thank you. We had several items, and I'm just going to walk you through all of these, and then we can chat about them.
Thank you.
Make any changes, um, at the end. So, we talked about the Dublin Hospitality Industry Restart Plan. I think you've all seen that. That was submitted by Scott Dring, uh, on the Visitor, uh, Visitor Bureau. So, what we recommend is we do provide the $300,000 in funding, but utilize unearned economic development incentives in the general fund to do so, and structure the financial support to maximize the likelihood of reimbursement under the CARES Act. Um, as Dana mentioned earlier, um, that part is really important. So, we would have a professional services agreement with, uh, the, uh, DCVP and the city to be able to do that. So, is the first recommendation. The second one was regarding financial support for the Dublin Arts Council, um, in terms of operating expenditures. So, what we recommend is providing, um, it totals out to be $360,000 in funding, subject to, um, what we'll do is we'll utilize the Hotel Motel Fund. There are funds in there that have gone unspent. We will forgive lease payments on the Dublin Arts Center through December 2020, and we will defer $475,000 in the Dublin Arts Center Capital Project, which is currently allocated in, um, 2021 in the current CIP. We would defer that to 2022 and then determine the path forward at that time, sort of depending on the level of support that's required by the DAC and the fund balance of the Hotel Motel Fund over 2020 and 2021. And then structure the financial support to maximize the likelihood of reimbursement under the CARES Act, similar to DCVP, by having a professional services agreement between the Dublin Arts Council and the city. So, that's the second recommendation. We have a recommendation regarding the tax grants that, um, were, um, voted on last November, and I, um, Anne provided for you the list of those in, uh, Board Pack. What we recommend is that for, for those who have events canceled due to COVID-19, those events will be eligible to receive reimbursements for the expenditures as specified in the grant application. So, if it wasn't specified in the grant application, they wouldn't get a reimbursement for it. Funds appropriated for events held in 2020 will not be permitted to be rolled over for future years. Um, and again, those are all listed in, uh, the memo to Council. So, the Beautify Your Neighborhood Grant Program, what we recommend is postponing the decision to award these grants till August. The total amount budgeted for these grants is $32,000 in 2020, just, uh, for your reference. And, um, the final piece is, uh, regarding the city's commercial leases. Uh, so if you'll recall, we have a subway leases, um, space in the rec center, and of course, we closed the rec center. So, we would forgive all lease payments, which is $1,000 a month while the Dublin Rec Center is closed. For the Dublin Village Tavern, um, the Dublin Chamber of Commerce, we would forgive these lease payments for three months. We would reevaluate the loan forgiveness prior to the end of the three-month period for additional considerations. And we would authorize the city manager to take these actions necessary to modify the lease agreements as necessary to execute the lease forgiveness. So, if there's any changes to the leases that need to be made so that we can do this, we would authorize, um, Dana McDaniel to do so. So, I kind of blew through that fairly quickly, what I was hoping you guys all had an opportunity to take a look at this prior to Council tonight. Do you have any questions? Or comments from either the committee or from Council? Great. Um, this next part's yours, Chris. Public comments and such.
Public comments, sorry about that. Uh, Anne, have we, did we receive any public comment prior to the meeting this evening?
Uh, we have not received any public comment.
And Sue, have we, this is the live stream?
No public comment or questions.
Okay. Are, is there any motion to approve, uh, the committee recommendations or modifications?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
I'm here.
Okay, um. Anne, would you, would you call a roll on that motion?
Uh, Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms.
Same.
Uh, Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor De Rosa.
Yes.
Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Okay, um. Next on our agenda, we have the Convention and Visitor Bureau Restart Plan. Home for that.
That was all part of the report.
Don't have anything additional for that?
No, I think you're, you're down to the Public Services Committee.
Thank you much. Uh, okay, Public Services Committee, we have Jane, uh, so please, what's an update on that?
Okay, um, the Public Services Committee met, met on May 4th and to discuss Phase 3 of the city's mobility study. Specifically, we spoke about, uh, the senior disabled circulator and the workforce shuttle, micro transit pilot programs. And staff presented a very extensive overview of the mobility study background and provided, uh, quite a bit of detail about Phase 3 of the mobility study. The staff outlined the 2019 and 2020 program budgets and grant awards, as well as costs associated with providing the services. Uh, ridership information and data were reviewed and ideas for continuing the mobility study in the Phase 4 were shared. Um, the Public Services Committee was generally supported, supportive of the mobility study, strategic priority areas. Um, but given the recent changes to service and the need, uh, due to the pandemic situation, uh, Public Services is recommending extending the contract with share, the current service provider, through the end of 2020, but it's subject to review of the funding plan for the remainder of 2020. I'd like to add that there is, uh, grant dollars that have been, um, uh, given or that are available for both the, the workforce shuttle and the, um, senior disability that would cover funding for the remainder of 2020. There's, there were some concerns, um, and some questions and discussions about the fact that the, the cost per ridership of both the workforce shuttle and the cost for ridership of the senior was quite, uh, high. Um, for, um, for each rider on the workforce shuttle, it, the average cost was $46 each way. So, um, it is a fairly new, um, program. Last year, when we originated the senior shuttle, uh, the cost was also high, but it's dropped almost in half, um, as the ridership has increased. But because of the pandemic and not knowing how many people can ride in these shuttles, uh, we really asked that there would be follow-up at future meetings relative to these, um, services, so that we have more data understanding, uh, who the riders are, how to expand the ridership so that it's broader, the funding mechanisms that we, that may be available to us that wouldn't come out of necessarily city budgets, and any strategies that we could use to attract additional riders and additional populations, especially on, uh, the seniors. We have, um, Avondale being a major user of it, and it's been a very important, um, um, amenity for them to be able to get the groceries, to get to the grocery store before the pandemic. But, uh, one of the objectives is to make sure that the population across the city is getting, is taking advantage of these shuttles. So, there's a lot more information and a lot more data that we need to, um, to be provided to Public Services. And so, um, uh, right now, they determined that it's not, is not needed to, uh, publish an RFP for micro transit services until we, um, get a little bit more data. But as for continuing the share service through 2020, that was recommended by the Public Services Commission, Committee. Um, anyone from, um, the committee want to add to that?
Uh, thanks, Jane. Uh, Anne, did we receive any comments prior to the meeting this evening?
Uh, we did not receive any comments.
And Sue, did, have we, uh, through the web?
No comments or questions.
Very good, thank you. Uh, in light of that, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Keeler, I think, uh, Kathy.
Second.
Kathy moved and Anne seconded, so Anne, please call roll.
Uh, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner? Uh, Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor De Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, that'll, uh, bring us up to, um, Coda. Kathy?
Uh, thank you. Um, I only wanted to make a, a quick comment is, as you're a, aware, Coda has been operating under, um, emergency service levels um, during the, the last several weeks, and as the community begins to go back to work, they are reaching out to employers and to employees um, to assess level of service needs, et cetera, so forth. So, I encourage anyone who's using Coda, um, from a business perspective or from ridership perspective, um, that if they, that, that they need support or they, they need some outreach to go ahead and contact them, because they've implemented, um, flexible services, et cetera, to be sure that they're there, um, as these things continue to change. So, um, I, again, thank the team for continuing to provide service. And as Jane brought forth in her conversation about share, there's just lots of folks out there working very hard to get people that need to, um, to work. And so, um, thank you very much and I appreciate all those efforts.
Thank you. Uh, Friendship Association, Christina and Andy?
No, we have not met.
I will do, uh, Morphe, uh, Morphe's been very active, as you've heard, uh, facilitating conversations with Tomma regarding, um, really, th- this particular one was around 4th of July, but really about congregate sort of, uh, celebrations. Um, so, I, I would like to, I would like to thank them. They have been working tremendously hard on inv- and getting us exposed to our higher elected officials on calls and conversations with Sherri Brown and Rob Portman and Sivers and Troy Balderson and Stephanie Funtzy have all, um, participated in those calls and those conversations. So, um, I'm going to talk a little bit about the care stuff in a minute, but really want to thank, uh, Morphe for what they're doing in facilitating that discussion and understanding of, um, the legislation that's been passed. So, uh, Logan, Union Champagne, Regional Planning, Andy?
Nothing to report.
Very good, thank you. Uh thirty-three quarter or Kathy Jane?
Nothing to report.
Arts Council, John?
Nothing to report.
Word of Education, Greg?
Nothing to report.
Uh Washington Township, Danny?
Um I spoke to the chief today. One of the things he wanted um you to know that one of their firefighters, who was very sick with COVID and on a ventilator is. Is is doing better and hoping to get back to work soon. One of the things he wanted to be sure that I absolutely uh emphasized is the fire department is at is one. Very, very thankful for the passage of the fire levy. They are so appreciative of it. And also of the outpouring of the phenomenal support that they've received from the community. They they have received so much support and um they can't they can't accept any any food at the time. But they said that they are are just lifted by by the by the community's work and trying to help them out. Uh they have seen a little bit of an uptick in their calls uh for COVID-related calls. But um but it is very manageable and they are fine on their uh protective equipment. And um they um are more than willing to work with us as we go forward in looking at. Uh ways to help the restaurants. Uh he said to be sure that uh we passed on that I passed on that whatever was necessary to help our restaurants. Uh with with the fire inspections and getting access and all of that, that they understand the situation and that they'll do everything they can to to lend a hand there. So. That's all from them.
Well, I know if we were together, we would be looking out the back left-hand side of the room and we would see the chief and Eric sitting there and we would wave to them. So um I I I know that they're probably with us this evening. So thanks for that report and I'll stick with you on Dublin Bridges. Anything to report there?
Yeah, Dublin Bridges has been extremely busy. One of the things that I think you you need to know that is they are doing the snacks for students. Which is a snack pack that they pass out on on uh Fridays, uh which is a week-long uh bag of snacks. They have raised over forty-five thousand dollars for that program in the short period of time that we've uh gone through this uh pandemic. I think that's just um amazing to me that they're able to do that. They're also working on um. Uh they're collaborating with the Dublin Arts Council for um arts is not canceled and they provide uh packages of. Of art packets to to children and during the breakfast and lunch program. They have, they have not stopped running since since it started. One of the things they wanted to be sure that I did is that I held up. Uh I don't know, I can't share, but if I can, Dublin, they want people to sign up for neighborhoodbridges.org. All you need to do. Is uh go onto neighborhoodbridges.org and put your email in and become part of over five hundred neighbors in our community that are helping. So if you want to find a way to help citizens, this is and your neighbor, um sign up to neighborhoodbridges.org. Uh hit the Dublin Community, put your email in and you can be part of the hand-to-hand kindness in our community. So we thank them for that.
Jane, can I ask you a question about that? So assume that uh. Maybe one of my neighbors is elderly. How would I get connected with them if they're not computer savvy? Would they need to have entered themselves in this uh neighborhoodbridges.org database?
Right. No, actually, most of the time, the Neighborhood Bridges takes all of their referrals from a faith partner or a social services partner. But if you know, if you know of someone, especially seniors right now, what they've done is they hook them up with neighbors. Or other people that would like to help them. And so that's how they're serving the the seniors right now. But if you know of a need and you and you um email Dublin Bridges, they will find a partner who will help that person and then make that a referral.
Thanks, Jane. I know the uh Dublin Educations Education Association donated quite a bit of money uh from their the. End-of-year teacher events that they were not able to hold, so they donated all that money to Dublin Bridges so that the kids could have snacks. And uh clearly, you have been watching a bit of Jimmy Kimmel in the evenings or something, so you've got your signs printed up and you're ready to hold them up. So can't keep her down. Yep, Jimmy Kimmel's got nothing on you. You can hang with the best of them. So thanks for that. Veterans Committee, John? So I'm gonna step in maybe a little bit for John, cause I we can't hear you, John. Uh I I do know that our um. Our Memorial Day celebration has been altered. Maybe Dana can jump in.
Sure, Mayor. Um oh, there's John, he's back.
Back, but I'm not getting any audio. I I'm getting.
Yeah, hey, thank you. Uh.
Dana, why don't you just go ahead and.
Are you getting any audio, audio?
It's very broken, John.
No.
John, I'm just gonna have Dana go ahead, if that's okay. My apologies, but we're only catching every twelfth word.
Yeah, have Dana go ahead. Yeah, I'm losing my.
Thanks, John. So uh so anyway, yeah, so as as I think of, as everyone knows uh by now, the uh Memorial. Day celebration is gonna take a different type of approach. It will be videotaped, it'll be made available. Again, the focus that we mentioned last week is gonna be about, you know, promoting the purpose of Memorial Day, encouraging people to celebrate that. In a solemn uh but yet joyful way of their own, uh perhaps at ho- obviously at home, because we'll be still be in a stay-at-home. But uh wanna encourage, again, you know, a safe approach to that. Uh but we will livestream uh the. Uh tossing of the wreath into the river, which is traditionally done. We will livestream. Uh both a a small ceremony that'll be held at the cemetery, as well as, uh I believe there'll be a guest speaker on that. Also, uh the luncheon will not be held in the park like we normally do. Unfortunately, there will not be a procession. Nor uh is that, you know, is pretty similar to a parade and we don't want to create gathering around that. But I think we'll get this done in a very respectful and uh yet um solemn and joyful way, as we should. Thank you.
And I believe John's gonna represent council in that space being our our veteran. So thanks, John, for being willing to serve there. So. For that. Okay, uh Complete Count Committee, Christina?
Thank you. Um just a really quick update. Um we continue to try to get our numbers up. We had a couple of jumps up into the seventies percentile. Um we're still working. By getting the word out to that sort of sort southeast corner of the city, but overall, it's going pretty well, considering that we don't have people out there knocking on doors right now. Um so thanks for everybody's efforts. If you can continue, as you see people, talk to people, social media people. You know, continue to encourage folks to um complete the census so that we can get those numbers up and and hit our bowl. Thanks.
Okay, it brings us to roundtable. Um I will uh let's stick with you, Christina. Roundtable, any roundtable items?
I I do not. I'm good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um John, I don't know, maybe you give me a thumbs up if you have something or. Okay, I'm gonna assume that you don't have something for roundtable. Text me if you do have something and and I will read it into the record. How about that? Jane?
Um just a a request. Um because of this discussion we've been having about interconnectedness and the internet. I'd love it if we could get a little update on that pilot program uh about connection into the residences from Doug. I think that would be a fascinating conversation to hear, you know, about that pilot program, because we haven't heard much about it and now's a good time to listen to it. And uh secondly, I sat in on that DORA webinar from Heritage Ohio with with Scott Dring. And um and I think that um one, I I think that the, as Dana was saying, there's a lot to work through. But it does make it a little bit easier utilizing the state's uh DORA uh program to maybe help our our restaurants. So even though I know that there's a lot of conversation around that and that this might be a conditional use, I think that it has. Some potential to really lift our restaurants. So um it was an interesting, it was an interesting webinar. We learned a lot. And I'm happy to share that with Dana as well. That's all.
Thanks, Jane. And I think that'll probably continue to unfold, depending on how long the this goes on, how motivated the restaurants will be to be more and more creative. If it's, you know, shorter, probably not so much, and the longer it goes, the more likely we'll have more folk participation. So thanks for that. Uh Andy?
Yeah, I'm gonna uh piggyback on the the DORA, the Explorer uh conversation that Jane just shared and Dana was talking a little bit about. We have an army of volunteers in this city. Uh the Irish Fest, for example, three-day event. I typically work forty hours and you multiply that by, I don't know how many city employees and you just, we can ask Christine Nardecia. How many man-hours that festival um involves, but. I think we have a resource here that could be. Could be used to sanitize those tents, arrange chairs, clean empty trash. Uh if it's not city employees and the restaurants are having a hard time coordinating. How many staff they have at these, you know, external locations that may be, you know, fifty yards from their restaurant. Perhaps the volunteers across the city could step up. I I'm looking for opportunities to volunteer. I have uh staff in my office that are doing the same and there are a lot of other folks that are remaining idle through this. Um that may want to get out there as well, obviously practicing social distancing, wearing masks and that kind of thing. But I just wanted to throw that idea out there as a resource.
Great. Uh Greg?
I uh agree with those comments. I couldn't say it better myself, so I'm not gonna say anything. That's it. Thanks again.
Kathy?
Um thank you. I am gonna take, I'm gonna take a a note out of Jane's book and I'm gonna hold up. Can you read this?
Congrats, Matt. Two exclamation points.
Uh congratulations, Matt. We're we're excited for you. We're we're honored and and very lucky to have you as our new finance director. So I wanted to say congratulations on that. Um and Megan, thank you for um all that your team does and public works. I mean, like all of us, I'm out quite a bit now, walking a- around and they're everywhere, keeping the city looking fabulous and supporting residents. So thank you for all um that you do there. And uh thanks, Chris, for all your work on on the CARES, because that's that's important. So thank you all.
Uh you gotta give props to Matt on that green shirt. I mean, if he works that hard being the finance director, as it does, the finance shirt that's that green, uh he'll he'll be quite busy. So. Really do want to congratulate him. I wanna just take a minute to talk about the CARES Act, because. There are, you know, literally billions of dollars at stake for the state of Ohio. So as you know, and I'll try to summarize the, I don't know, the twenty to thirty emails you get a week of of the current state of things. But um so the Senate Bill three-ten uh came out of the Senate last week. It appropriates three hundred and twenty million dollars to local governments. They did use the local government fund distribution method to distribute those funds. Uh we received somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um obviously, we don't do well in the local government fund calculation. We have um neighbors with half of our population that receive in excess of a million dollars. So uh we are trying to work hard to have a more equitable way to distribute. So this was the first three hundred and twenty million dollars out of the one point two, one point three billion dollars allocated to the state of Ohio. Um so there's, there's nearly a billion dollars left to be distributed or returned to the federal government. Uh the guidelines for what this money can be used for um is quite narrow in terms of PPE and things like that. Now, we have received and you all received some, an additional. Uh commentary on some other interpretive things that that could be used for. And we're uh have a call tomorrow morning that we're hoping to get more clarity on that. So uh there's a lot of work to do in this space and there's a lot of unknowns, but we are trying to that. I do really want to thank um our Congressman Troy Balderson has been very helpful in this space. They've all been helpful. Sherri Brown's been helpful. Uh been in many conversations with Portman's Office. Um Steve Sivers has been on some calls. Uh Stephanie Cooney has been very helpful. She introduced the bill that uh she was a co-sponsor of the Senate Bill three-ten. So now that is in into the House and um it's expected to come out of the House at some point this week, but it may look different than when it went into the House. So uh we'll keep you updated as as much of that, because our number could fluctuate based on what, how it comes out of the House. So just a a brief overview of where we are with that. And um I want to give a little shout out to the Greater Dublin Realty Association. Uh I got to have opportunity to speak with them Friday morning. And they had all the same questions that you're running into, everyone stopping you at the grocery store or anywhere else. Um about Fourth of July and Memorial tournaments and Irish Festival and um it is. There there's not very many good things out of COVID. Um I I would just take a small number of them. One is our residents exploring their community and falling in love with new spaces. Um and as the second would be the affirmation of how much our residents enjoy the events that happen, the ones that we put on and the ones that others put on here in the city of Dublin. Um those are are two really uh wonderful things. And also, uh congratulations, we have a new graduating class of Leadership Dublin. And uh they had their graduation ceremony, I believe, last Thursday night. So congratulations to those graduates. And uh we've all seen the updates for the way a high school graduation uh will be held. And um thank you to Chief Price in working with the schools for everyone, the traffic that will be the drive-through. Commencement and diploma distribution. So thanks for working on that and um for our. Permitting Department for getting these tents up and down and so that everyone can have that celebrated. With that, I want to take one last moment, check in with um Anne and with Sue if we have any comments before we close the meeting.
Um we did not have any further comments.
Thank you. And Sue?
No comments or questions.
Very good. Well, I wish you all a wonderful evening and with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.